Okay, I'll start the meeting. The meeting is at five is two oh five P M. And I'll start by my greeting. Ani ninduwe maganada. Njigi ikutu mune ninduwe maganada. Nengi nikuchu wellten ingo mabagane nengam. Niswa gamiwi zaga ekare. Amadevi kame. Banakwe banakweve ginsis mongam. Ni ishtana ashi murengana disid. Oda wanaputut nimdego. Nicole Dejarly mudeishtegaz. Obishiki manesimandude. Niswa gamiwi zaga ekare ninduwe. Obashinendujiba. Ogakhanen ingiya aledis. Ogakhanen endenongam. Ni midana ashi naan en indasopabunidis. We quanja two and wait, we need a minute on my busy. Me you me which. It's gonna be weird. Thank you for listening. Uh, we're gonna go call the meeting to order. Ina Staley, can you please take roll call? Absent. Mike there, can you please take roll call?
To appoint the clerk for the way of the court.
Ina Staley is our clerk. Do we need to appoint the clerk in her absence?
Yes, we can appoint someone else. We need to look through these. Basically, here's the roll call. Sometimes clerk does minutes, but that's what should be.
Okay, we'll appoint Jack Dejarly today as the clerk. Can you please take the roll call, Jack?
Oh, Dejarly.
Oh, my idea.
He's Jordan. He's Staley. He's there.
Here.
I was telling you.
Here.
Dejarly. Yes. I'm there.
Here.
Come up. Oh, my idea.
Me which. Item two B. Do you have any guests today?
Do you?
Oh, ah, Mr. Rogers.
Hello.
Josh Reyer, doctor. Your presentation part, half interest team. I sent it out though.
Would you, Dash?
You do. Yeah, um, yeah, I'm gonna give you guys a little update and review the last time I was here in the spring. Uh, our building is going up. We just got doors and windows on it this morning. Uh, it should be ready to go for the winter. I don't know if you guys are familiar of, uh, past Billy Westhold up on sliding home. Uh, we're actually having an event there on Saturday, an mountain bike event. We've got a bunch of mountain bikes really bringing out there. But if you guys want to come see the building, kind of see the area, we see the trails that we got. Uh, we're putting in more trails at this, uh, um, this fall. Uh, so I've been on there yesterday. Uh, so basically, uh, you know, even improve the road going up to the building so stool boxes can get up and down and go. Um, yeah, the building should be ready to go, um, for the winter. So we're planning on having a lot of more ski events, probably one every three months out there. We invite community out, you know, uh, have people go skiing, uh, such old mountain bikes, variety of snow that we plan on getting people going on too. So, yeah, we're, um, kind of really wanting to see about getting a, uh, ski team over at the high school too. On something, uh, um, you know, we kind of, I don't know anything anyway. We've invested quite a bit of money, you know, in the, the building, you know, the trails, the equipment, make the trails, you know, we have all our skis, things like that. Um, and we want to bring kids to competitions like, you know, my program, like we need more of them to jump in and help, you know, transportation, whatever needs to happen. Um, but yeah, we just like to, um, get the kids out to communicate their involvement in this winter.
And you said you, your program willing to help the transportation?
Yeah, we just figured out, um, what needed to happen, um.
So, to complement what he said though. I came this year in July on a team with driving and. Half inch of skiing is kind of one of the greatest sports in this region for a winter time sport, uh, and the lifetime sport. The upper body, lower body, arm condition and. But I don't need to sell the marathoners, but it is something that a young person or an older person or that would like to get out and recreate on their truck here. They try to put in a great network of trails. They expanded it. They have the grooming equipment. They do a good job doing that. And now they built a, basically a warming house, a kind of place where you can go out with the family, get your skis ready. At the school, high school team, we could go there and get ready or a kid needs to take a break and warm up or to go back out and ski again. Well, it's, it's an incredible system, uh, sort of modeled a little bit after what we made by the. Uh, the other part of it, uh, the transportation part, they helped us out last year. Um, in COVID, there was absolutely a number of drivers. Um, that program allowed us to use a, which came back into the vehicle which I drove, allowed us to get the team out there. So, um, that day happened last, last year. And again, this year, if you're, you know, if they're willing to do that and they're already okay with me doing that, that'd be a way to make that happen. See things and know. Um, you cannot make that decision tonight, but I would like to propose to you that take this sport before Minnesota High School League and then approve it, at least at the junior high level. Cause I'd like to be able to take students to have meets. So they're that chance to experience what, uh, young people across Minnesota, actually most of state now are pretty self, like experiences, teams, uh, different courses, different hills, the excitement of it. And it's a game out of change sport. I think it really opened up another avenue for young people here besides being in the gym playing basketball, which I love basketball too, from being outdoors. Um, it's a good sport and it's important. I know already that, uh, both in the community and through that participation, uh, we love people.
Yeah, I mean, we had a event last, uh, winter, the last one, we had it in town. And then one time we had forty six, uh, community members off skiing at one time. So, so, yes, it's really, you know, catching on. So it's a whole family, you know, thank you. So, you know, the kids are out practicing, like we have plenty of our own schemes, uh, you know, the brother, sister, mom, dad live to come out skiing. So it's something that, uh, something else to do in the winter that's outside.
So, um, based on the message I sent you from my memory searching, right? Things like coaching, I'd be like one of the coaches, Josh and Simon Bob, somebody working at, uh, immersion school.
Yep, there's a teacher immersion school, D A's Johnson. She's often interested in being assistant coach also. She skis and she walked out with our lead class here. And then hopefully we brought kids from the immersion school out and we got skis for all them. It's all in through last, uh, last winter.
So from that perspective, if we do two coaches, which is important, being out there with setting up trails. The transportation we already mentioned, uh, skis. We've got quality equipment, but to go to the level when you want to go start skiing competitively, then I put in a request this summer. I put in, um, a bid with, uh, a hopeless, um, bike and ski in the midge for some people to bring them to a level where they can ski competitively on fast, fast speed.
Did you, um, I'm sorry to interrupt, but did you apply for this as a club?
I did.
So you are running as a club this year?
I am, because there was no, I mean, I want it to happen, whether it's a club or if it's a, a sport. Being a sport allows you then to take them because of ski rates. Cause they don't allow in, um, just a club team. They need to have the high school league approved.
Yeah.
Uh, but then you might, but I didn't want to go to them until I'd gotten, you know, back from decision of the board to have our, but, uh.
Well, I understand too, we missed the deadline for applying or giving us an allowance for applying, correct?
Yeah, he said it was good through October. I talked to him in June, the Minnesota High School League person who is major. He said up through October, it's a winter sport. He said, you'll still be able to prove, uh, admission of the sport.
So that's where you jumped at Tana Command, then?
Uh, I don't know if I jumped it.
You didn't even go through our A D E, this one straight.
I sent the, I sent messages to no one about this, but I didn't get any response. So I wanted to check on my own and see if it was possible to do that.
Till the end of October?
Yeah, no, I attempted, but, you know, I'm busy. I do a lot of other clubs and, um, that's not an excuse, but, um, I do, I care about the clubs, uh, like, uh, skiing is one I want. I think. It's true with the glove. Um.
Were there, uh, schools, the, with the team, let's say there's a team with the, uh, student, the gallop of the meeting?
Um, the ones I put down in that message were, um, the Vichy Detroit Lakes, which is Maple Lodge, which is twenty miles this way from Detroit Lakes. And then our Grand Rapids, Deer River East, that's our team. I'm not sure if we still do. And then Brager, Brager has the junior high championship, which has teams from Minnesota, Fergus Falls, Little Falls. They're bigger schools, but, um, I think this, this would be a, it's an incredible setting. You have an awesome trail system. And, um, I think they're, you've got the students to have the interest in it and I think they would follow through with it.
Do you have a list of your students today?
I don't, uh, I sent those, uh, previous meetings that wanted to have access, uh, without work. But, uh, either way, uh, it will be a club or it will be action. But I'm just, you know, putting the case again if we can, uh, to get to that point, um, with the sport, an incredible sport in the tribe, we're, which are really a great position. Um, yes, it will cost some money, um, but I think it's a really good investment, uh, this school. They'll make us a better looking school, providing another winter sport. Uh, we don't have wrestling, you don't have something other, or other schools have, but we do have incredible outdoors, you think? Um, I, I know my students when I get them outside from the line. Of course, we did it through it in school. We did much better outdoor.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, you passed your time. When it, Me which for your time? I appreciate you coming to present this.
I got another question or two. Um, just to kind of thinking down the road, um, just based on some of the other schools you named off. Have you considered, like, let's say hypothetically, if you don't get it as a sport this year, you know, maybe you have a couple year with the club and then I'll say next winter. What would you think about, like, uh, some schools combined with other schools to make, you know, um?
It's a cool one.
Yeah, you know, they call it, at one time, they were calling, I think, base sport. They were called central, north central for football and things like that, you know, like since you're playing, you know, Grand Rapids during the Detroit.
Not really like the teen sport, so I don't know if the numbers are that important to have like the full team at that. Am I correct?
Just our distance and then we have such a great set of trails here. And then I think the pride of competing for red light would be awesome. I think those kids all on the trail do, with their own uniforms, they're good skiing for like.
Or the individual races?
Yeah, you're all good as an individual. And you also put it as a team score.
Okay.
Five just four of the team.
Like tracking deal type of stuff?
Okay, so this. But thank you.
Yeah, um, can I ask you guys what, what your opposition to decide new or keep?
I'm, I'm not opposed to it one bit. I'd love to see something new like this. I'd love it when we have different kind of clubs and, uh, wide diversity of clubs in our school. And if we could turn one of those clubs into another sport here and try it, why not? We've had the same, uh, set of sports for the decades. You know, at one time I know we had track and field in Red Lake and we do have athletes who, yeah, don't necessarily do the sports during what we have offered now. So me personally, I'm all for it.
So we've added esports, have this plus now. I mean, in dollar racing, I think our kids can do what other kids can.
And me, I would like to see it run successfully as a club before we try to move into that competitive stage that you want to go and compete. Cause that is kind of business and travel, you know, to compete.
Relative to, yeah, I mean, basketball will grow similar just because, and the energy that went this out, so it's actually a closely related region. But, uh, it's a great sport and I can do it another year at the club. I think I'll invest some of my own funds on a support can help me out in getting some, um, jerseys and maybe getting better racing equipment if we do go to, uh. But the Vichy allows us to go to the, cause I'd like my peers feel like, I hear you, I want you to have this. And if it happens to be one more year at the club, I can work with it.
It'd be nice when, uh, have uniform, you know.
Yeah, it's built that.
Be competitive.
Very well. So appreciate it and, um.
Me which?
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Um, guys. I still didn't see a list of junior, Mr. Let's of the, um, members of that E.
Yeah, we can probably still grab that. He did say he sent it out on other, maybe, maybe day, but.
No, in July, he talked for us and he said he was going to provide us with a list, but he didn't get it.
Okay, all right, I'll ask him. Especially when they will make a note here, uh.
So that was just, you know, just fun to see who are his, um, athletes and. And how many are interested? Speaking of that being said, is there any other guests here today? We're gonna move on to item B. Summary over, overview of the agenda, superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Dejarly. After our allotted time for comments and delegations, we will review the latest enrollment report, followed by the business manager's report. After that, we will move into the consent agenda, including approving the minutes from the September twenty, the October and September twenty first board meeting. The board will then be asked to approve two resignation requests, followed by the approval of additions to the sublists. Then the board will be asked to approve the hire of five new staff members. There is no need for a closed session at this board meeting. The board will then move into the action items on the agenda. This includes approving a list of bills, uh, check numbers and wires in the amount of two million, seven hundred and fifty seven thousand, one hundred and ninety nine dollars and twenty cents. Followed by being asked at the board to ratify the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty five master agreement with Red Lake Public Schools Principals Association, followed by approving an out of state travel request. Then the board will be asked to approve the out of state travel on December tenth through twelve to the visa annual conference in Las Vegas. Then the next two items, items E and F, the board will be asked to consider two motions to terminate employment of staff members. We will wrap up our action agenda with action to approve the twenty three, twenty four and twenty four, twenty five wage increase, constant living allowance for the non-union district staff, mostly made up of, of, uh, district administrative type staff people. After that, we will move into our miscellaneous concerns and then adjourn our meeting. Me which?
Me which? Okay, with that being said, we're gonna move on to item four.
Actually, we haven't do it on item three eight. Can you do that real quickly?
Three eight, future meeting.
Something we would like to start doing, just as a reminder to all of us of what we, we have coming up. And two of those are contract negotiations on Monday, November sixth, followed by, uh, grouping November twenty eighth with our M F S T A group. That's the last group we've been negotiating with. So wanted you to be aware of that. There's a middle there, November fifteenth is our usual regular school board meeting date. Um, November fifteenth to ninth. Thank you.
Me which? Now we'll move on to item four. Approve all of the agenda for October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three.
For that, if I could mention again that we have one addition and one reduction for, and we call it more of a delay or fulfillment. If we could take item seven G in the consent agenda and remove hiring that individual as a paraprofessional for now, bring him back next month and replace seven G with new seven J actually, or to call it seven J on intensive purposes, but at the end of the consent agenda. And that is to approve hiring Aya Hoffman as a pair for the district and she'll be working in a meeting. Thank you.
Me which? So with the amended agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion.
Me which, Rob, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? If you will take a vote, all those in favor to approve the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Five four. Five, public comments and delegations. Do we have anybody here today? Okay, we're gonna move on to item six, reporters. Itchi Okama, Divajamoule, superintendent reporter.
Me which, Chair Dejarly. I mentioned, uh, I sent out my report already, but I want to add to that. One, an experience I had today, which I would truly characterize as a meaningful and almost sacred, uh, cultural experience. And I was being able to go along and observe taking of, uh, a rifle of a buffalo on buffalo farm today. That happened a few minutes after noon today, twelve o'clock. Uh, Dr. Dune Geshik was there and he, uh, smudged the rifle that was used, as well as the shell or the cartridge that was used to shooting the buffalo. And he smited all of us who were present and they were probably about fifteen or less there for his, um, special events. And Rob May with the carrier and the rifle and then to put down the buffalo. And buffalo will be processed. The plan is to be processed tomorrow over at the community building. And we'll have an opportunity to bring some students over who will watch how a buffalo is quartered, skin quartered and, and tortured in process. So, and then I understand that the, uh, the meat and giving of the buffalo will be provided to the Red Lake community. So I am grateful for having had that opportunity. I've never experienced that before. And I think that most people there were saying the same thing. It's a once in a lifetime. Me which?
Me which? We'll move on to item sixty. Junior, Itchi Okama, Divajamoule, Business Manager Report, please.
Me which, Chair Dejarly. And, um, for that, uh, report, uh, I'm referring you to page six in the board book. It's a, the UNWOL report that has all of the lists of our, um, finances. And once again, as is always the case with our business manager, really, everything is in order. So rather than spending what would probably be forty five minutes to go through the guidance, it's sufficient to you in its entirety. Um, you don't need to approve it, but it's something that in your, uh, extra time, if you do have that, feel free to go through it. And if you have any questions, you know, be here tomorrow or next week. Um, let me know or let Billy know. Like this will be in order. Our finances are strong and very healthy.
Me which? Me which? We're gonna move on to item seven, consent agenda for October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three. Do we have a motion to approve?
All motion.
Me which, Tom, do we have a second? Sorry, good. Me which, Rob? Is there any discussion regarding the agenda? Okay, with that being said, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Me which? Five four, zero, yes. We're gonna move on to item eight, closed session if necessary.
Only right now, we may have need next month to negotiate with M S A, but nothing today.
Okay, Me which? Item nine, action items. Approve bills and wires for the month of September two thousand twenty three. Do we have a motion to approve?
I.
Me which, Mike? Do you have a second? Okay, Me which, Jeff? Any discussion? Okay, we're gonna take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Me five four, zero, yes. We're moving on to item nine B. Ratify the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty five master dream of what the Red Lake Public Schools Principals Association.
Me which? Yeah, we'll point out two things and they would do two major items in here. And, uh, first one was, we cleaned up some language and updated language. And I would refer you to page two twenty four if you want to follow along and forward. But the, uh, on page eight, we chunked out most of the language on sick leave and replaced it with, uh, on the following couple pages. This is paid time off and this is a common procedure. We see it in a lot of school districts. What we have done is saving all of the principals personally, you know, their sick leave and combined them and are now referring to that leave time as paid time off. We can go. And, uh, the same amount of hours, probably the same amount of days that they would have had before. But what's nice about doing it this way is now there's no need for, then explain why they're taking personal, you know, maybe, you know, an uncle's fault or great grandfathers significantly others. But personal leave or P T O is P T O and it's not up to us to determine who it's important they take time off for. That was one of the changes. And then the other change was the basic cost of living increase where principals were given pretty much what we saw in Toronto, any other agreements, five percent. So in a nutshell, that is what the match is. Yeah, can you do that? So I submit this to you today for your approval. Me which?
Me which?
John Chanlu?
Yep. Uh, how many significant, the rest were just clerical?
Me which for that? Any further discussions for? Okay, with that instead, we're gonna take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, oh, I jumped ahead of myself. Okay, we gotta take a motion. Do we have a motion to approve?
All motion.
Me which? Do we have a second?
Oh, that is.
Me which, Rob? Now, any further discussion? Okay, with that being said, we will take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You said five four, zero, yes. We're moving on to item C. Approve an out of state travel request from Cleveland Engmire, a school psychologist to attend the National Association of School Psychologists Annual Convention in New Orleans on February fourteenth through seventeen, two thousand twenty four. Do we have a motion to approve? Out of state travel?
I'll make a motion.
Me which, Rob? Do we have a second?
Second.
Me which, Jeff? Any further discussion? Okay, with that being said, we're gonna vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Me five four, zero, yes. We're moving on to item D. Approve out of state travel on December tenth through the twelfth, two thousand twenty three for NISA Annual Conference, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Then, um, Chris couldn't be here today because when we made the schedule change, got conflicted with the state meeting. He had to attend mandatory meeting for, um, his work in town health, but he did ask me to include him as a person who would like to have him.[1642.26] For um, his work in town health, but he did ask me to include him as a person who would like to have him, he did commission to go.
Me which for that, and I also will be attended, would like to attend NISA. Any other school board members would like to attend? Sure, welcome to join us down there, if anybody would like to come to the conference.
We probably should keep it as typical, we know more than three, so we don't have to receive. And we still have time to change our mind and bring up the meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna move forward, do we have a motion? To approve out of state travel for Chris and Nicole.
All motion.
Me which, Tom, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Me which, Rob? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you in favor, Jeff?
Hmm.
Okay, five, four, zero, against. We're gonna move on to item E, approve termination of employment with employee two thousand twenty-three dash E. Effective October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Chair Nidjarle, and for this motion and the next one, again, we have to be careful that we refer to individuals as. Uh, numerical letters. Three and twenty. Yep. Um. But, you know, and it's always difficult to make these decisions, but we want. Individuals working on our employment goal, as shown, who are. Willing to be here and bring forth their best selves, our students deserve that. And the recommendation here is to terminate the employee. Because of disciplinary record, including a letter of expectations. Well, as due to the fact that job abandonment, so. Job abandonment is basically meaning just individuals have not been showing up, not been making calls. And uh, not proving the need to be done. We need people on our staff to be here plus. So the recommendation is to terminate motion for twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Me which? We'll take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
A motion.
Oh, no motion, I skipped it again. Can we get a motion to approve the termination of employee two thousand point three dash E?
All motion.
Me which, Tom? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Me which, Rob? Now, we'll take a vote, all those in favor to approve the termination, please say aye.
Aye.
Need five, four, zero, against. Okay, we're moving on to item X, approve termination of employment with employee two thousand twenty-three dash F. Effective October twenty-fourth, double one agree.
Me which, Chair Nidjarle, for the same reason, we are recommending that um, more terminate this employee. Um, along with job abandonment events or not responding to any communications. I find out why or where this individual is working. This individual also has had a recorded history of. Excessive absences or numerous instances of reporting late or actually leaving. Work, leaving underground. While still on the block or extended periods of the company, so costing the district where I'm at. We bring this recognition to terminate as well.
Me which? Okay, with that being said, we'll take a motion to, to approve the termination of two thousand twenty-three F. Employee two thousand twenty-three F. Do we have a motion to approve?
No.
Me which, Jeff, do we have a second? Me which, um, we're gonna take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Need five, four, zero, against. We're moving on to item six. Approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four and the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five wage increase. Cola for non-union district staff.
Me which, Chair Nidjarle, I would direct you to go to page two ninety-three, board book, the very last page, if you wanted to flip everything over. And the uh, contract, this group is. Uh, certainly a group that is part of a partnering unit, but they sit together as a group. And uh, treat it like a situation where they do discuss the cost of living. And the only change is that cost of living, which is again in line with other groups, five percent for each year. Five percent increase for twenty-three, twenty-four and another five percent for twenty-four, twenty-five. With the uh, combined two-year total being one point six seven percent. That's in line with what others have received, so we bring this to you for your validation.
Me which? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a whole group.
Me which, Rob?
Second.
Alright, Jack? We'll take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Five, four, zero, against. We're gonna move on to item ten, miscellaneous. Do you have any miscellaneous today?
Um, I had a discussion with a teacher from the middle school in regards to the auto shop. Building and um, my understanding is the school and the tribe have a. Uh, jointly used it, but over the, I don't know how long it's been, it sounds like it's been a couple of years. Since the MOU has been signed. Um, not much has been done on either end, by the school or the tribe, so um. I just kinda wanted to put that on our radar to maybe set up something for next year, because uh. The, it's a lot nicer facility, the tribe did invest some on new equipment and everything in the room. Uh, talking to people from mostly Maritata, they're still, you know, ready to. Do whatever kind of collaboration to the auto shop class or so kind of older.
Yep, we, uh, that's um, my bucket list for my donkey from next year, I was even hoping to do something second to that one. But because of a number of reasons, that probably not realistic, but. Been in uh, conversations with Jerry Loudmore too and yeah, we think we'll. Make that happen next year along with a couple of other projects.
Thanks for bringing that up, Rob, that makes me wanna ask, I thought they were supposed to be out of our building by August.
We had talked about that and then came to our agreement with the tribes that. Yes, as long as, our issue was they weren't, they're not paying any fees.
Mm-hmm.
And that agreement way back when, eight, nine, ten years ago. Was they pay no lease, no rent, if they help us with education for students and. Auto shop work, auto mechanics and. And then COVID pretty much got in the way and. Even before COVID though, one of the difficulties was finding auto shop. Employees who could pass background checks in the future. And Jerry has assured me now that the group we have wasn't there now and passed the background check and. He just thought, well, let's give that another try because it is a wonderful opportunity for our kids and. We have a teacher probably that wanted to talk to you. Who can be doing the teaching on our end, along with the cooperating teachers on Oshki.
So we, we made it a, a school board meeting, we had a meeting and said that we. We sent this letter, you guys have to be out, so I was wondering why they're still here.
And one of the reasons is that it. Now, they appealed to us to have, please do something and. And also, we looked at the optics of the test, made us look pretty good politically, you know, in terms of being a. Collaborating partner with the tribe and I think anytime we can cooperate.
But, but, but Mr. Lutz, they were not holding up under and.
Exactly, but realizing how busy Oshki's been with. Other projects and programs and now we'll rant that I think COVID really did tax a lot of the. Bandwidth, as I was saying, with Oshki, who was like to give it another try and if that doesn't work this time around. Maybe we'll find another person.
I think you're good to start this part of the discussion, we'll keep the discussion going, is invite Oshki to one of our meetings. You know, to uh, your next presentation. Yeah, and just make it time, cause. Yeah, with uh, money they've invested in the building is great, but that'd still be cool if they could hold up there under the bargain of offering services to the school.
Yep.
Cause we got a teacher, uh, I think he does, another person that there would teach the auto class too, so maybe do keep hearing enough of that. You know, offer that.
Me which, is there anything else, miscellaneous?
Well, so I'm really, what was going on with that last presentation that went on with this lady at Tangle, while there's many. The whole thing been, I had a phone call with her, a good visit and then a couple of days later, were able to confirm that things have gotten. Things have gotten bad and uh. I have the dirt since then, I, and I. Both were there when I did talk to her, I said, please know that you can call me anytime. Or you can call the principal. For the one principal school, so, and I've been over there a couple of times and it seems like. Class is doing well and they had a great experience with um, bicycle riding. About a week after that, during that week, so things have gotten. Far as I know, now, comment, better. So I haven't had a single call.
Me which? Anything else under miscellaneous? Okay, with that being said, will we have a motion to approve? Me which, Tom, do you have a second? Me which, Rob, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, four, zero, against, two forty-four P M.
Thank you, so they're very efficient board meeting, thank you for that, Tom. Sometimes it gets dragged out if I'm waiting for a motion or a sentence, so. I'll leave you there. Please today, I've been meeting, all reason. My task of the year.
Me which, can you prepare the report?
Thank you all, have a good day.